All right, I will call the September the 10th, 2024 council meeting to order and I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Map?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum present and we can continue with the meeting. At the elevator ding, I had someone that was gonna come and pray tonight, but I don't see her, so we'll move on. If you will, please stand and join me in the prayer and the pledge. Eternal Father God, we come before you tonight to just say thank you first and foremost. Thank you for being and abiding in this meeting tonight, keeping us on one accord, keeping our minds stayed and functioning on the city business. We ask right now, Lord God, as you let your people come before us to engage with us about whatever it is that they want the council to know, that we all stay in the same agreement and we stand the same line to know that we can disagree but yet come to agree. We thank you for this dais tonight. I thank you for each alderman and alderwoman represented up here that as they represent each district, they represent well, where you have told us to lead and lead well, and we thank you for that on tonight, that you've given us this opportunity to lead such a great city as this. So it is these and many more blessings we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This portion of the meeting, we will entertain our public comments, and at this time, we only have one person signed in to speak tonight, and that is Ms. Brenda Ford. So Ms. Ford, I'm gonna ask you, if you will, to come onto the platform and tell us what you want us to know.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I come this evening because of the apartments or the residents that they want to put on Dunlap. As you all well know, that the traffic on Dunlap is already jam-packed. I have been living on Dunlap. Well, the house in which I live presently was built in 1963. I moved back home in 1983, and the traffic is terrible, gruesome. It has been continuously growing, and we do not need any more traffic in that area. I ask each and every one of you that when someone comes to you all with a contract and wanna build something out there, think about the ones that's living there. It's hard enough already get in and out of any area there. And we, the ones that stand there, ask yourselves, would you want apartments or houses or anything else in your area that's already jam-packed with traffic, that's continuously growing and growing and growing and growing? Would you want anything else in your area built that's already congested, that you can't hardly get in and out of? Would you want something in your area that you can't get out of? Would you want apartments in your area where you live? Would you want some in your area where you live? Would you want some in your area where you live? Let them come to build in your area. If you had some land by your area, would you want them to build in your area? Ask yourself that. I've been living there. I can't get, it takes me five to 10 minutes to get out from Mamie Harris Road. I sit there. If the fire department have to get out, people do not even pay attention to them, and they be blowing their horn. They keep on going. The bus, if you go to, from Dunlap to 441, wait on the red light, and then they talk about putting a roundabout at the bottom. What good that gonna do? None, none whatsoever. People come through Mamie Harris Road trying to get out from Mamie Harris Road to Jefferson Street, and then they said no through traffic. What good do that do, a sign do? None whatsoever, none, 'cause they come through it anyway, think it's gonna cut them off to get to Jefferson Street, trying to go to Log Cabin Road or the other side. It's enough traffic on that area anyway. So I ask you all, please do not approve this contractor's bid to build apartments from He wants to congest the area to lump all of us together. So I ask you all, do not put them, put all of us together, do not approve this man's contract to bid. Thank you all for your time. Have a blessed day or night.
Thank you, Ms. Ford, for your input. And I'm sorry I didn't recognize to say when the clock strikes zero behind me. I'm sorry, but that's okay. You could. That's okay. There's never too much of our time.
It's the ringing that you were trying to figure out what it was.
Oh, okay. I'm looking around trying to figure out what is that noise. Okay.
You're on a rope.
All right. Thank you again, Ms. Ford.
Thank you.
You all have received a copy of the August 27th, 2024 council meeting minutes. Are there any corrections that need to be made? Hearing nine, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt the minutes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries and the minutes are adopted. Only comment I have tonight is that we have Georgia College and State University students here, Mr. Cliff Wicksen class, if you all wanna stand, wave, and raise your hand at us. We're always glad to have you all come back as often as you would like, not just to get the grade, but come back and learn what we're doing up here. And the only other thing I got tonight is we're gonna move this meeting alarm, 'cause I know everybody wanna see the debate live and in person and colors, so we're gonna get on out of here tonight, okay? At this time, we will move to the city manager's report, and I ask, we'll recognize Mr. Griffin for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. As we get started, I wanna ask our HR director, Sandra Witherspoon, to come up to the podium. I know that y'all are gonna be surprised that I'm actually letting somebody else talk about a spreadsheet, but Sandra and I have been working together and looking at insurance rates for the 2025 coverage year to try to get the best option for our employees and for the city, and we think we have come up with that, and she's gonna present to you what rates look like based on what's been shared with us and give to you our recommendation. As an aside, I spent time with her and our chief of staff, Ms. Hills and Butts, and a number of other folks yesterday, today, and then we've got one more tomorrow, interviewing potential brokers who may provide us our coverage beginning in coverage year 2026, at least give us some different options to look at from what we're currently getting with GMA. So we're continuing to try to get the best product for the best price for insurance, and I think we've done that tonight. We've actually done something that Sandra's gonna be presenting to you that I'm pretty excited about. I mentioned to you in my biweekly report that, at least for as long as I can remember, this is the first time we've actually offered different options for employees to be able to help control for themselves what their insurance is gonna cost. So she's gonna tell you about that, and then we'll take any questions that you have when she gets done. So Sandra, let me pull these up for you.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
As Mr. Griffin said, we have been working on this for quite a while, trying to find that sweet spot where our coverage is both cost-effective for the city, but yet still benefit-rich for the employees as well. On the screen, when we first started this, we, GMA gave us the top portion. That's what we currently have now as far as our coverage is concerned, and below that, option one, two, and three are some of the items that we have come up with that would be possible for both.
Y'all should have it on your screen in front of you now.
Sorry?
That's all right.
Okay.
I should've already had it up there before you started talking.
So as I was saying, the top portion that has the 2024 Illustrated Premium and proposed option one, proposed option two on the top of that sheet, that is what we currently have as far as our medical coverage today. Below that, where we have option one, two, and three, they are options that we are, we looked at proposing to be presented to the employees for coverage for 2025. As you can see, we have a mix of offerings, an option one, two, and three, with the PPO plan and the POS plan. Throughout the years, GMA has previously offered a lot of PPO plans and very little POS plans, but as the years progressed, there has been a flip-flop in that coverage, where now there are offering more POS plans and not that many PPO plans. So looking at the option one, we propose a mix of PPO 8060 with a $2,000 deductible, 25% dependent coverage. The second offering in that option is a PPO 8060, $2,000 deductible, where we would pay the employee portion, but the 30% dependent coverage. And the third option under that is a POS 8060, $2,000 deductible, where we would pay the employee portion and still have a 30% dependent coverage. Right now, on our PPO 8060 that we offer currently, we pay 90% of the employee coverage, and we pay 75% of the dependent coverage. So we are proposing to up our deductibles to the $2,000 mark and then propose paying the employees to pay 30% of the dependent coverage rather than the 25. And once we added all of those figures together, it came out to be a net increase to the city of 8%. Option two is one that we really mainly focused on, with the 8060, 30% dependent coverage, POS 8060, 30% dependent coverage, and the POS 8060, where we would pay the employee option, and that netted us with a 5% net increase from last year to this year. Looking at our coverages with the proposed lives that they show, GMA shows up top that that's the average enrollment that we had during the year 2024, and below that shows the actual coverage that we do have through GMA. We have, and this will come in play later on once I tell you these numbers, we have 90 people employee-only coverage, and of those 90 people, we have nine that are over 61. For the employee and spouse coverage, we have 20, so you know you have 20 employees enrolled, we have 20 spouses enrolled as well. Employee and children, we have 26 employees enrolled and 41 dependents under that coverage. And in the family option, we have 19 employees enrolled, which includes the 19 spouses, and with that, we have 44 children. So we feel that option two, when we first looked at it, we were gonna offer three plans under that proposal. We thought about it, and then we said, well, it may be a little a stretch to go from one plan to three, so we backed out, and now we're gonna propose two plans to our employees. The plans that we want to propose is the POS 8060 with $2,000 deductible with 30% dependent coverage, and the last plan of POS 8060 with the $2,000 deductible, 30% dependent coverage, but we pay 100% of the employee option. And once we plugged those numbers in, took away option, the second option under option two, we netted out with a 1% increase for the city. We were originally looking at a 15% increase, but when we plugged in the numbers, we got it down to a 1% increase.
That's right.
So offering those two options to our employees would not only give them the option to choose what plan they would like to enroll in based on their own circumstances, their family size, or what they need, but also would refrain from having the city to absorb a 15% increase in premiums. Any questions?
I do, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So the top proposed number one, is that GMA's, that's GMA's figures, right?
Those are GMA's.
Is that with the increase?
No, that's what we currently have now in 2024.
Okay. So I'm trying to understand where the logic came in to pay the entire employee cost, instead of having the employee pay some of the percentage that they're already paying. What, I mean, how is that saving? Because we, you know, I thought we were looking at trying to save. I understand what you have here, that it's only a 1% increase.
Right.
But I still, even if you give them options, what's the logic behind not, the employee not paying any portion of the insurance?
We felt like if we did that on the POS, POS plan, it would encourage some employees to go to the POS plan, which was cheaper instead of paying, staying on the PPO.
I would think that employees would rather see us put that money back into salaries for salary increases for next year, rather than doing that, and they still continue to pay that share that they were paying.
Well, we can certainly do that. If you do that, then it goes back to a 5% increase based on the information for, for the rates, but I mean, that's, you know, that's certainly what we can do. We can do the, we can do the POS 8060 with a $2,000 deductible and continue to pay 90% of the employees' coverage, and they pick up 10% of it if that's, if that's the option that everyone likes best.
I mean, that's just, that's just me. Everybody else can speak their piece, but if they're only paying 10% now, I would think that they would rather us take a portion of that and put it back into salary, rather than put it into, towards salaries for next, salary increases for next year.
I don't, and this is just me thinking, and I would love to come back a year from now and say I'm wrong, but I don't, I don't think doing that is gonna encourage folks to go to the POS plan. It might because of the reduced premium that their dependent coverage is gonna cost them, but, you know, we don't know that. It's kind of a, it's kind of a gamble that that's gonna happen, but we know that if any of them go to a POS plan and we continue to pay 90%, we're, you know, pretty sure what those costs would be, but one of the things we, we have talked about with these brokers that we've been meeting with this week is, and this is not necessarily germane to this discussion, but actually one told us today that most likely, full coverage insurance would not be available anywhere in five years, that you'd have to look at some type of self-insured and stopgap measures and those kinds of things, and that may even mean that PPO goes away before then, but we can certainly, you know, we budget for a 10% increase, so if we, if we have that as a 5% increase, then we've covered the spread on that. And then, you know, by the time we get ready to look at the 2026 coverage year, you know, maybe the broker has gotten us a good enough deal where the increase is not that major, but we know it's gonna take some education to, to encourage and have employees feel comfortable with the POS plan because they've been on the PPO for so long. Sandra has reviewed providers, and there's basically no provider, no difference in providers between the PPO and the POS in Millageville and Macon.
My thing is, it's just absolutely unheard of anywhere where employees are not paying anything for health insurance, and so, you know, I just, I think that...
It's also unheard of, people, of us, of an employer paying 70% of dependent care.
Exactly, exactly. So I think that we've done very well, keeping it where we were. So why, you know, why change that when you're, you've already, you already have that process?
Well, we've been paying 75%. We felt like the employees needed to absorb a little more of that cost this year.
Right, that's what, that's what we thought. So, you know, taking it back to not paying, for them not paying any, I just don't think that that's logical right now.
One other reason that we thought about that was because of what the biweekly deductions for each tier would go to if we, if they continued to pay their portion. The increase would range anywhere from $6 per pay period for employee only up to $83 per pay period for family.
Tell them to go work in the real world. I'm serious. I mean, I'm not trying to be funny about it.
Yeah.
But even if they go to work for the state of Georgia, they're not gonna have that. Their employer is not gonna pay that much of the portion of the health insurance.
Right.
So to me, it's just not logical for us to do that, as, you know, not when, when we're looking for ways in the budget to charge other fees for other things, that that's kind of like going backwards to me, that from what we've outlined that we need to do. It would be stepping backwards. Like I said, that's just my opinion.
So, Mr. Griffin, are y'all continuing to look at it, or is this something you all have already?
We gotta make, we've gotta make a decision and let GMA know by the 12th.
Yeah.
So did anyone?
September?
You have one. You have one. It's in your, it's in your packet. It's in the packet I emailed you.
In two days, you got a little...
I'm sorry?
In two days, you got a little...
For this month?
Well, so...
So have the employees...
I know I'm not the only one down here that doesn't understand everything, all this creep that just got thrown at us, but, 'cause I've never worked in HR, I've never done all this much, but POS, if somebody could just explain that part of it, I got the PPO for it.
Okay. The POS coverage means point of service.
I wanna know what this POS stands for.
Point of service.
Point of service.
Point of service. And what that means is that you can go to any doctor.
These acronyms that come across, and you just go, it just shot right over my head.
So you, in other words, you're speaking of physicians within a network or out of a network, correct?
Right, right.
So how we explain this to our employees to make sure that they understand the choices?
If I can't understand it, to vote on it, how they gonna do it?
That, that will be something that we will bring to the employees once we decide which plan that we are going to present to them. We will have someone...
They're kinda pushing it, though, if you make the decision on...
But it's kinda unfair to the employees.
Well, we need one person talking at a time.
I'm sorry. I mean, we just need to be fair in how we present, present this information to our employees, you know, we, they have to understand the choices that have, you know, that they have.
Right, and someone from GMA will come down here and have information sessions with our employees to explain to them exactly what each option is, what each option entails, and give them what they think would be best for them.
We have, we have no intentions of changing the plan and leaving employees on their own, okay? We've never had that intention.
I just wanna make sure that...
And the only reason we're looking at providing us an additional level of service in the, in the point of service plan is to give the employees the option for having their deductions be somewhat less than if they stay in the PPO. And we're gonna explain that to them. I mean, I, you know, that's one of the, I'll go back to our broker discussions that we've been having the last two days. We've talked about how important education is to our employees, and we're not, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do this and then tell people, y'all decide what to do, and not tell them what to do.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure they understand.
But when you say deductions...
But we can't guarantee that they understand, but they'll be given every opportunity to understand.
So what you're saying, this is what we're considering open enrollment right now, this time period?
No, open enrollment will not start till October.
Okay.
But we have to let GMA know the plans that we're gonna offer by the 12th.
But when you say deductions are somewhat less, the deductions are not gonna be less 'cause you're going up on the deductions.
But they will be, the, the, what comes out of their check will be less if they go into a POS than if they stay in the PPO, because those rates are less.
So I think, from what I'm hearing, it sound like council feeling like, okay, you got two days to let them know, but they're just hearing it. Anybody else wanting to weigh in on that particular part? 'Cause Mr. Nisa's giving her comment how she felt, well, we're gonna move right along, 'cause I think this is up for approval tonight, correct? So, anybody else want to weigh in?
Let me let you know that coverage-wise, what the employee pays for doctor visits, emergency room visits, specialty visits are the same as the PPO. Nothing's changed.
So then what's the, what's the catch, other than, other than, other than the fact that we are absorbing all the costs and they're not? I mean, what's, what's the point then?
Well, even if you don't go to the, even if you don't go to the 100% employee pay, the POS rates are still less, the POS premium rates are still less than the PPO.
So in other words, you're saying the employee's gonna realize a little bit more money in the savings, yeah?
Okay, and that's where you're getting only a 1% increase as opposed to going to...
Well, no, we won't have the 1% increase if we don't pay the employee portion. If we don't pay 100% of the employee portion, it goes back to a 5% increase.
So why are we just talking about this two days before it's gonna go?
Well, we only, we only got the rates the day that y'all heard from the GMA representative two weeks ago, and we told you all at that time, we had gotten those rates, and we would be working on bringing a recommendation to you, and that's what we've done now.
I'm comfortable with the recommendation that's been brought by our HR department. Thank you, Sandra.
I mean, if, if, you know, the, the, the option...
But that's just your opinion. I'm making sure that everybody's taking care of themselves.
I'm just saying, I'm out of the discussion.
Wait, wait, wait. We need one person talking at a time. Mr. Griffin, go ahead and get it out.
The option to have the need to absorb an 8% increase means that we stay with the current PPO that we have, and then we raise the deductible from $1,500 to $2,000. That's what we did two years ago. We went from $1,000 deductible to $1,500 deductible. So, you know, if, if, if there's some concern about offering different levels of insurance and employees not getting that education, then we stay with the PPO 8060, increase the deductible to $2,000, and then we only have to absorb an 8% increase as opposed to 10% that we budgeted for, and then employees have the very same coverage they have now.
Mr. Chairman, did you want to...
I'm good. I'm starting to catch on.
Dr. Lee, are you good? You got a comment?
The employees will be told, be given an educational, like, little lecture on what it is, right, and it's point of service. Yeah, I understand.
We, yeah, we, as I said, we have, we have no intentions of leaving these employees out on their own to pick their service. It's a little bit disconcerting that y'all think we would do that, quite frankly.
No, no, no. I didn't think that. I just, I was just curious as to why we're doing the other.
We would, we would not do that, and, you know, if we want to absorb the 8% increase and keep coverage as it is, and then once we choose a new broker, if we see that they can come back with something more advantageous in 2026, then we can certainly, we can certainly do that.
I understand.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure.
What was the recommendation that you gave or either sent to you?
Well, the recommendation that we gave was to go with the POS 8060 with $2,000 deductible, and the employees pay 30% of their coverage and 10% of their... and the employees pay 30% of their coverage and 10% of their dependent coverage and 10% of their coverage. Or they choose to go with the POS 860, still $2,000 deductible. But we pay 100% of the employees' premium and they pay 30% of their dependent coverage. But, you know, it is-
And that, excuse me, is it built between neither one?
Yes, now, now during open enrollment, when they decide, that's what they're locked into for, for the planned year.
So how does the POS point of service plan do with their current level physicians? How does that work with that? If, if you have a slate of, of physicians already, then, and then you choose the option for a point of service? How does that work?
Actually, there are more physicians covered under the POS plan than they have under the PPO plan.
But when you compare the two, and Sandra did this, when you compare the two and look at physicians in Millageville and Macon, which is where the majority of our employees are going to go, every physician that was in the PPO is also in the POS.
That's what I want to make sure because-
No difference in who you have to see or-
No, there's not.
Center in a different direction or whatever.
Actually, we have more.
And, and that, and that, and obviously, as we work through the education with employees, that's, that's something we will do. And if they, if they already have a relationship with a physician, we will check and make sure that that physician is still available to them if that's what they want. And if it's not, then we, we will encourage them to stay in the PPO so they can stay with that particular physician.
So who, who would the service be rendered through?
The carrier?
The carrier, uh-huh.
It'd still be the same carrier that we've had.
It would be, um-
Still Anthem.
Still Anthem.
And I think this is only, I think this is only the second year that GMA has offered POS products, isn't it?
They've operated before. We've just stuck with the PPO. We've never rendered outside the PPO or anything.
And, and to, and to be honest with you, some of that, quite frankly, was concern about having time to get everybody educated. I think we have that time now. But I know what it is. They added, they added a, a, hit me out, was it a, was it a 30-50 plan or something like that?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they had one of those.
I mean, it was not even something to even look at where, you know, you got 50% coverage in network and 30% coverage out of network. And that, that was not anything that we even, we even began to, to entertain, so.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you all done with your presentation or you have something else?
Unless there are any more questions after that.
Okay, thank you.
And we can, we can discuss it some more when we get to that resolution as part of the, part of the discussion on that resolution.
Thank you. Now we'll move on into old business.
Actually, I've got just a couple more things I need to mention in my report, Mayor. Just a little more information about some, the rest of the resolutions that you're voting on. It, it may look like Resolution 2409-40 and Resolution 2409-41 is the same thing. And it, it is, it is similar. Meba will tell you that I went around and around and around with the Jifa folks and trying to explain to them that we, we typically did not offer tentative contracts, we just authorized contracts. But in order to be able to get the Jifa loan, um, the funding from the Jifa loan that we received, uh, back in April, the $426,750 that you all approved applying for and, and all of which will be forgiven, provided all the funds are drawn down and that certainly won't be a problem. They wanted us to actually send them a resolution stating that we would tentatively offer, uh, the contract to utility and water services. While we were waiting for this meeting to happen, the actual contract from, from water and utility services came in. So we can actually provide, if you all vote for it tonight, provide the tentative contract resolution for Jifa and also the true contract for, uh, utility and water services. And I'll just remind you that these are all the things that are having to happen because of the lead and copper rules. And, uh, we feel really good about where we are right now. We have, we have met the initial deadline of having our inventory in. And, um, now we're working to, we, we reported about 6,000 suspected lines in our initial inventory. We think we might be able to whittle that down to maybe about 4,000, so we're working on that now. Whatever we whittle that initial number down to is, are the number of people that we would have to actually contact to let them know that they, they potentially have lead in their service lines. And then come back and based on whatever requirements EPA has, to come back and, and then talk about how we're going to repair those for, for those folks. So that's the reason those two resolutions look very similar. I just wanted to let you know why that was the case. Everything else is pretty straightforward. 2409-43 is the one dealing with insurance and we will continue to discuss that when we get to that point. So, uh, also just to let you know, we haven't gotten the final schedule yet, but as soon as we do, I will let you know. But, um, the Hallmark Network will be in town, uh, the end of this week and in the, and during the, uh, weekend filming in some areas around our, our city. And, um, they have been very good and very easy to work with. And so as soon as we know when the air date on that particular program is, we will, we'll let you know that. But so if you see, see folks around town with cameras, that's what's going on, so. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Um, now we'll move into old business. Our first order of old business is to conduct a public hearing to consider ordinance O-2407-12 to rezon property located at 230 North Warren Street from single-family residential to multi-residential to provide for duplex apartment building. The procedure for conducting the zoning public hearing will be as follows. Once it has been determined that the public hearing has been properly posted and advertised, the clerk will read the proposed amendment to the Land Development Code. We will then hear a report from the building official, including the adv, advisory decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Council will first hear the applicant and anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the amendment. We will then hear from anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the amendment. If anyone speaks in opposition to the amendment, we will then give the applicant an opportunity for rebuttal. But the rebuttal must be limited to the points or issues raised by the opposition. We will then give the opposition the opportunity to speak in rebuttal. They too must limit comments to their points or issues raised. Please make sure that before you speak, that you come to the podium and give your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to speak on the matter is encouraged to do so, but comments must ma, remain relevant, concise, and polite. So at this time, Madam Clerk, has the public hearing been properly advertised and posted?
Yes, it is.
I will ask the clerk to read ordinance O-2407 by caption.
This is an ordinance to conduct a public hearing of an ordinance amending the Land Development Code to allow for rezoning located at 230 North Wayne Warren Street, I apologize. This property is currently owned by Renee Butts and is on SFR2. Applicant desires to rezon property to MR2 and provide for a duplex apartment.
At this time, I'll recognize the building official, Scott Johnson, for his report.
Planning and Zoning Commission met on this August 5th and they had a unanimous vote to pass.
That's your vote? I said, that's your vote?
Short and concise.
All right, thank you.
He learned from Mervin.
So at this time, I'm going to remind anyone who wishes to speak to come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. So if you're wishing to speak, please come for us.
Good evening, ma'am, everyone else. I'm just going to introduce myself. My name is Renee Butts. I am the owner of the property located at 230 North Warren Street. Mr. Tim Thomas will be representing me, so if you have any questions, he will be able to answer you.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. Tim Thomas, uh, my address is 1898 Timberline Road, Millageville, Georgia. For the record, I am the Public Work Director for the City of Millageville, so we can hot document that.
Let it be so.
So noted, okay. I am also the owner of Otis Thomas Construction. We have been hired as the architects and builders for this project by Ms. Renee Butts. And at this time, I'm going to take a seat, pass it over to my son and he will present and we are answering the question there.
All right, good.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Deandre Thomas. I reside at 201 Lower Springs Drive, Macon, Georgia. I'm a Georgia State Licensed Contractor and we have been obtained by Ms. Renee Butts to demo or rebuild a two-story duplex. This project accomplishes the existing fabric of the neighborhood. Ms. Renee Butts is not only looking to produce the property as a rental income, but most importantly, improve the quality of the neighborhood. This property is currently zoned as residential. However, in order to maximize the use of the property and meet local ordinance and codes, our findings suggest that the property should be rezoned from residential to multifamily in order to meet the setbacks and compliance of the ordinance MR2. According to Article 3, Section 3.4, Zone MR1 and MR2 duplexes are permitted by right. We are seeking your approval to rezon this property from single-family to multifamily. And that will conclude our proposal and we surrender any questions.
Thank you. All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this amendment? So we don't have any rebuttals, we don't have any oppositions. Are there any questions or comments from council?
Yes, ma'am. I hate to always be the one to have questions or comments, but I hate it, but then at the same time I don't because this is my district. And, um, I travel this way quite a bit. When I leave home, sometimes it's, it's kind of difficult to get through the four-way stop sound there at the corner of Montgomery and Albert. So I will turn and go down the hill and then make that right turn onto North Warren Street to get out. And whenever I do that, there's cars parked there that you have to go, right, as soon as you turn that corner. You kind of have to put on brakes because when college students are there, sometime there's cars on both sides of the road. So I, I just, I'd like to know if increasing this to multifamily and, and duplexes, and you rent it to college students, when you rent something to one college student, that means 15 cars are going to be there. I live in that neighborhood, I know. So Ms. Butts, my question to you, my question to Mr. Thomas is, how do you plan on addressing that? Because it's, 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 it's really, as soon as you turn that curve off of Montgomery Street, you come upon your, 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 the place that you're wanting to increase the number of people there. So I'm really concerned about that congestion right in that area.
I can understand your concerns. However, Mr. Thomas and I have been planning this, I want to say almost a year or so. But if you look at, I'm not sure what page, but you should have the slide and it'll show you the parking.
This should be on the site plan.
And no offense to you guys, but the, the college students, but they understand what I'm talking about because all friends and everybody stopped by and it's never one set of cars there. Right, so that's what I'm concerned about, where they're going to park. You have parking in the rear. Are they going to be able to get in and out? Because if someone comes around that corner and somebody's backing out, because already now at the cur, with the current status, there's always two cars hanging out in the road. And so when you come, when you make that turn, you always have to move over because there's one car and then there's another car behind it, but there's not enough room for two cars and the second car is always hanging out in the road.
Okay, for the, uh, to address the parking spaces?
For this side right here, this is, this was designed specifically for this side. And we, we was able to, that's one reason we had to go to MR2. So we can meet all the setbacks. So what, what we were required to do is have four parking spaces as we sit here. Parking space one, two, three, and four. That's all-street parking. To discuss your concerns about the electric parking on the street. Most of those, they don't have all-street parking spaces doing that adjacent to the, to the track. However, for this one, we, we do have all-street parking.
And so do most of the houses that live around me, but then when you add all the other cars, nobody, you can't even go past my house at night because there's so many cars at, at those places that are supposed to be duplexes. And, and, and then even over there, you know, you could drive down Montgomery Street all the time. It looks like a parking garage. Off, off of Montgomery Street and in that turn, what I'm talking about, it looks like a parking garage at night and in the mornings.
We, we changed control that. We meet the ordinance and the code. But the rest, that's out of our control.
But it's in our control.
Well, yes, if you say yes or no, but as far as compliance, as, as, you know, you have-
I understand, but, but here, you, you don't have turnaround space, do you? That they won't have to back out?
It's, it's at the top, you see? Parking space one and two, that's right, one and two, that's it.
Drive coming around the back of the property?
Well, actually, the drive before you, and, and make a left, the parking four and three, go straight ahead, parking two and one. And when one do it, five, that way, back on the turnaround.
He said, that's all right.
So, so to say, if, if we use as-is the current property, you don't have a all-street parking space. And if she go there now, the, the building adjacent to it is a duplex. And it's been rented as a duplex on the residential with his grandfather, but if she choose to do that now, you have even worse surprise. Because they're going to fog on the street.
But hers is not grandfathered in like that one is.
Well, yes, hers is because it's existing.
It's existing as single-family?
Yes, ma'am. And if she, if, if she choose to rent it out to additional individuals, then they don't, she don't have an adequate parking space. But if we convert it to MR2 and we get within compliance, we cleaning it up for that location. We can't control the other space, but we can with this today.
So is this intended for college students or, or for, um, families?
You were speaking veterans at one time.
Speaking what?
She was speaking veterans.
Veterans?
Because she's a veteran.
Two duplexes. So you're talking about two duplexes?
Just two, two apartments. Two dwell, one up and one down.
So if you rent, if one person downstairs have more than one car, I think is what she's trying to make the point is, where would they be parking? Because you only have one, two, I mean, two duplexes. One, duplex one will have two, duplex three will have three and four. But if you have somebody upstairs and downstairs, if they have more than one vehicle, where would that other vehicle parked? if they have more than one vehicle, where would that other vehicle parked, parked?
By, by ordinance, they're only required to have two per unit, per dwelling. And we actually meet that. Now, who come after that? That's why I said, we can't control that through design. If we had additional spaces, you could attempt to control it, but that's like somebody driving the wrong way down Jefferson Street. We have signs there, but we can't control that portion.
But it's different if you rent someone, that, that rents to someone in one duplex that has two cars and a truck, then what do you do? Or, and they drive an 18-wheeler?
Well, okay, so, so safe, yes, ma'am. So if they driving 18-wheeler, your honor, with you, they shouldn't be driving 18-wheeler if they don't have a parking location for that vehicle. And if you rent to, to anyone to have more than two vehicles, they gotta make arrangements to not fog on the street, because that's not allowed. We have to, that's the city, get on the other side, that's the city. We gotta control that through enforcement. We have to do that.
And I think that's why Mr. Denise is asking, it's about the control mechanism here. And she's probably directing that more at Ms. Butts than she is you. You're the contractor, but she's wanting to know from Ms. Butts the procedure which, how she choose to rent this place out, and the parking is what she was trying to address to her. What was her, it's not so much as you, I think he was addressing Ms. Butts with that.
What, what would happen the minute you have that road blocked, and then you have, I have my senior residences, residential people that live down there on McIntyre Street that come out that way, and they're always fussing about vehicles parked, 'cause it's easier for them to come out, leave, and come out that way rather than to try to go across Elbert Street. So they turn right off of Mac, and the most of those houses down there and the apartments back there have senior citizens in them. And they come that way, and then when they have problems with cars on both sides, guess who they call? So I, I...
They go, they travel which direction?
They, they, when they come off of, like, when they come off of McIntyre Street down there, McIntyre and Lincoln, rather than go up to Elbert Street, because it is, it's a drag race right there between the light and the four-way stop sign. So they don't go that way. They turn and go up Warren Street to Montgomery.
Go Warren Street to Montgomery.
Yeah, because you, there's two-way traffic right there. When you come off of...
You know, this location is one-way traffic. This location, this is a one-way street. This is not two-way.
Right, right off of Montgomery?
Warren, you have to...
Warren.
Warren is not totally one-way.
Yes, it is.
Well, they don't drive totally one-way down there. I mean, because it's not understood. They don't drive, that's what I'm telling you, they don't drive one-way. When you come off of Warren onto Montgomery, is, I mean, come off of Montgomery onto Warren, it's not identified as one-way up in there. On the other end, it is. On the end, by Hancock Street, it is.
There's a sign that says one-way. It used to be two-way, but it's one-way. So if they're going, if they're going both ways, they're breaking the law.
I agree.
I, I don't have a explanation for someone breaking the law.
But I'm just...
But what I can do, what I can do, ma'am, is when I lease these apartments out, rent them out, in the, in the lease agreement, I will write that down. There's only two parking spaces, and there should be no parking on the street. I, I can do that.
And then, Mr. Griffin, we as the city, we need, we gotta do our part. We gotta make sure the police departments are traveling these areas, kind of get some enforcement going with the parking, because it's becoming hideous for a lot of people. Get a lot of calls on it. Okay, so is there any other questions from counsel?
My question is, Mr. Jordan, can we make that a provision?
Provision?
As part of the approval requirement placed in the lease.
I think that is not going to, to be binding. It arguably could be binding on...
To Ms. Butts?
But it would not, definitely would not be binding on any subsequent purchaser of that property, and probably not binding on Ms. Butts. But she's, she's standing committed to, to do that, so we would assume that she would do what she is telling us. But you're not going to be able to make an exception or a condition to this rezoning request based on her representation that she is going to include some verbiage in a lease that prevents off-street, I mean, on-street parking. We would be better served if we adopted some type of ordinance or resolution that banned on-street parking at, at, on that street. And particularly if we've got an issue of a one-way street that is being used as a two-way street, that definitely needs to be addressed by our police department.
And your sign, all your signage is in place for one-way. It's just they, they continue to use it as a two-way. In fact, we eradicated the lanes and all.
Right, right. I see it. But they use it, I'm telling you, I run into it every day.
Any more questions?
That's all for me.
All right, so thank you, Ms. Butts, and thank you, Mr. and Mr. Thomas, for your presentation. You know, you had a son that owed, taking over daddy's spot, but thank you. And as I said, you know, the City of Millersville Council, we, we just gonna have to do our part to enact some ordinance to control whatever's going on with the sun things. So this concludes the presentation of the evidence in a public hearing. Is there a motion?
Motion, we approve.
Second.
I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
I'm gonna vote no.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
So our other order of business this evening is to reconsider ordinance O-2408-13, which was tabled at the August 27 council meeting. And I will ask the clerk to please read the ordinance by caption.
An ordinance amending the ordinance setting license fees and conditions for specific businesses.
You've heard the motion, I'm on the ordinance. I'm gonna ask Ms. Shinholster to offer up the motion on this, please.
Okay, at this, at this point, Mayor, I would like to offer a motion to consider a substitute ordinance as an amendment to the original ordinance. And that is the ordinance that we have in our package.
Only a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Now I need a motion to adopt the amended ordinance.
Motion, we approve.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
At this time, we will now consider the new business, which is part of the agenda. And I will ask the clerk to read ordinance O-2409-16 by caption.
An ordinance to conduct a public hearing of an ordinance amending the Land Development Code to allow for rezoning located at 1012 Fernwood Drive. This property is currently owned by Woodland Terrace Properties LLC and is zone SRF, Single Family Residential. The applicant desires to rezon the property to PD, Planned Development, for future expansion.
This is the first reading of the ordinance, and I am referring it to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'll ask the clerk to please read Resolution R-2409-40 by caption.
To authorize a tentative contract for service line inventory project to the Utility and Water Services Incorporated.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
With this resolution, would it be beneficial for us to, to make a resolution, or make an amendment, rather, to strike the word tentative from this, so that it can go on as, as adopted?
Uh, I'd have to defer to the city manager on that.
This, this is the resolution, basically the wording of the resolution that GIFA requested. So in order for it to, to make sure we meet what they're looking for, I think we need to leave the word tentative in there. It will go on once the next resolution is approved on the agenda. Believe me, I fought it.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. You had a motion on it? No, we, we hadn't even got to that part yet. She's gotta call the roll. We, Walter just raised a question.
He raised a question.
Wanted to know. And we were at any discussion at that time. I was at any discussion when he raised the question.
That's correct. You already had a motion in a second, I do believe.
Who motioned, who said?
Dr. Lee mentioned.
You motioned, Dr.?
Second.
You got that, Ms. Map?
Made the motion, this minute, second.
I'm sure the clerk has it correct. She don't have that.
Who made the motion?
Dr. Lee, I mean.
Okay. Who seconded?
Okay, when we motioned a second, we gotta speak up so they can hear it, and we need quickly give the second, or it will die. I will ask the clerk to read Resolution R-2409.
Don't we gotta vote on it?
Wait a minute now, y'all getting me confused.
We gotta, she's gonna call the roll.
Call the roll, that's what we was saying. I was saying, "Call the roll," when everybody said, "No." I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Now, I'll ask, Madam Clerk, to please read Resolution R-2409-41 by caption.
A resolution to authorize a contract for service line inventory project to Utility and Water Services Incorporated.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
So move, second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Gotta hear it. Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Now it'll move forward, Mr. Reynolds.
Motion is adopted. I will ask the clerk to read Resolution R-2409-42 by caption.
A resolution authorizing the First Amendment to the tower attachment lease with Verizon Wireless of the East LP, Doing Business as Verizon Wireless, to modify the terms and conditions for the placement of equipment and rent on the water tank located at 139 Robertson Mill Road.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
Make a motion, we approve, second.
Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
I'll ask the clerk to please read Resolution R-2409-43 by caption.
To authorize the City of Millersville to participate in the Georgia Municipal Association's Georgia Municipal Employee Benefit System Life and Health Program for the 2025 calendar year.
All right, this is the resolution, this resolution that not only authorizes participation in the GMA Georgia Municipal Employee Benefit System Life and Health Program for the 2025 calendar year, but affirms the planned recommendations made by Mr. Griffin and Ms. Witherstone. You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
So move.
Right.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
No, not voting against the process, just the plan.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Motion is adopted. We have one alcohol application that I will ask the clerk to present it this time.
Have an app called, um, application for Maruti Nandaran Incorporated, Doing Business as Exxon Food Mart at 600 North Jefferson Street. And this is for beer and wine retail package to go.
All right, you have heard the application. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion, we approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is for a 24, 24 life?
Twenty... Yes, yeah, yeah. It's basically just a change of owner.
That's what I was gonna ask, so this is just a change of ownership.
I'll ask the clerk. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden? Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
All right, motion is adopted. And I ask that if you have any discussion or your conversation when I say, "Is there any discussion?", please bring it forth then. Don't let me get to the roll call, and then we gotta stop. Is there a need to go into closed session this evening, Mr. Jordan? Nor Mr. Griffin had made me aware of anything.